September, all right, they're willing to open up the dialogue so we can bring some students here. All right, for the general public, we continue to receive some complaints about the automobile shop at Asbury Avenue and Langford. All right, both police as far as parking on the sidewalk and some code issues. All right, both the police department and the code department are diligently working to correct the problems there. All right, we've had some discussion with residents and homeowners on DuWitt Avenue regarding the ongoing situation with the trees. All right, we've come to terms with one another, we think that we might be able to work something out. I see Tom Gilmore's here, I just have a couple of words with Tom, if he's still here after the meeting. The next item on your agenda is special events and wedding applications, Tom Gilmore's here, we have 11 applications.
Good evening. The first application, we actually have two applications from the same applicant, from Madison Marquette. The first one is bonfires on the beach. This is what they've done for the last three years right now, and they are asking permission to do bonfires on Fridays during May and June, on Wednesdays, July and August, and then back to Fridays in September and October. As you may be aware, we had some cleanup problems initially when this started, and we've had no problems since that issue. So they've done this very well, and they're very popular. So are there any questions on that? Thank you. The next one is fireworks. They are asking permission to do two fireworks shows outside of the Fourth of July. The first is May 24th, which is the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, and the other one is September 12th, which is actually the Saturday of Oyster Fest, approximately at 9:00 PM on the Fourth, both shows on the Fourth Avenue beach. And Garden State Fireworks would be the company, the vendor for those events. Any questions? The next one is Community Day Festival 2015. This is an event done by the VNA, right outside their offices on Main Street and Fifth. It just abuts a little section of property that the city owns on Main Street. And they go, it's sort of like a health fair type thing that they do. They are going to have a tent, and I found out today that the tent will be 30 by 40. Any tent over 900 square feet, 30 by 30 requires an additional permit, so the fire department will be out to inspect the tent. Any questions on that? The next one is Youth Revival Weekend, May 22nd. This is an event that the French Baptist Church does in Liberty Park. They had asked to close the street down, which we told them that they could not close Asbury Avenue because it's a weekend, and that we will have, they will hire one officer actually to direct traffic from the church into the park. The fees on that are listed on the back, approximately $550 without, they will pay for the one police officer though. Any questions on that? The next application is the Gay and Lesbian Festival that we have. It'll take place this year on Sunday, June 7th. That's the parade that starts at City Hall and goes down to Bradley Park. They rent both Bradley Park and Atlanta Park for that, and close the Kingsley Avenue between Fifth and Sunset. Very, very successful event for the city, very well attended. They are expecting 3,000 people this year.
How many?
3,000.
For pride?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually we get 12 to 15.
Yeah. Well, probably just being conservative for application purposes.
Well, you know, what if it rains, cut that number in half, right?
Well, you know, we also base the number of police that we assign to the application based on whatever they put on their application, so.
Great.
But we know better, so. The next application is a request for a city date by the Asbury Park Technical Academy of Dance. The date they're looking for is June 14th. We have given them a date every year since I can remember. Any questions? The Asbury Park Promenade of Mermaids. I apologize for the condition of two of the applications that you got as far as copies were concerned. I gave you additional copies up there on the dais. But this is an event, it'll be a promenade on the boardwalk. We had looked at this application once before. It'll take place on July 11th. They basically start on the north end of the boardwalk and promenade down to the casino building in costume.
And you had a little notation.
Well, you actually got the, you got Lisa's copy of.
Yeah, because they had an event like this in Long Island or someplace, and the mermaids were topless.
I'd still vote for that.
So why off the record?
So as you noticed, Lisa's comment was here, concerned about outfits. Family friendly, so. Any other questions about that one? Okay. The next one, the Asbury Park Historical Society Art on the Boardwalk. This is again, a great event that the Historical Society does every year. It's a fundraiser for them. It'll take place on the boardwalk on Sunday, August 16th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's on the northern side of the southern boardwalk, right outside of McLunes by Convention Hall. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Next one is a new event run for the arts, a 5K. It'll take place September 19th, early morning event. We have reviewed the route, but we will probably put them back into our traditional 5K route, which is the two lap race. Just works really well, it's quick, it's about 45 minutes, and the race is done. Any questions on that?
So I just, not for this one, but for, in general, on all of them. Can we just make sure that, and I'm sure this happens, but make sure that we are communicating with like the businesses that are going to be affected by it? Because I talked to some people, and they weren't, maybe, maybe it's on them, but they weren't aware that something was happening, and they were overloaded with people coming to their restaurant, and then they didn't have enough staff, so then left with like, people left having a bad taste in their mouth. So I just want to make sure that like, if we're going to be going down Cookman or we're going to be going down Ocean Ave, that those businesses are aware ahead of the time that this event is coming down.
Certainly the ones on the boardwalk, because I know that Madison Marquette makes sure that all their tenants are aware on that. Downtown, sometimes it's a little more difficult, but we do, you know, put this message out, they're all on the website. We try to communicate with the businesses best we can, especially when the roads are closing.
Yeah.
For sure.
And with all the 5Ks and marathons and everything, we try to hit all, be it the Santander, be it the Seniors', and be it North Beach, to let them know also.
Yeah. Usually we go out on the route and notify people that are along the route to make sure.
Yes, great.
Then the last two applications here, if you'll recall, at our last meeting, last council meeting, we talked about having vendors on the beach, whether we were going to go out for an RFP or whether we were just going to do it as a special events application. The council decided that they, we tried as a special events application. We actually got four inquiries, and there's two applications on the agenda tonight of two applicants that submitted a special events application. One is a yoga, and the other one is a boot camp that would take place on the beach. At our special events committee meeting, we discussed this and decided that the beach crew would actually oversee these, determine where they would be on the beach, and what times they would be able to operate. They would all operate before 9:00 AM though, so that it wouldn't affect with any of our bathing situation there. So what we wanted to try to determine was what would be a fair fee for this, and we came up with a fee of $400. $100 would be the application fee, and $300 would be the use fee to actually use our beach. I tried again today, Deputy Mayor, to try to get some info from other beaches that do this. Most of the beaches here don't allow this on the beach. Most of the people sneak on the beaches, you may see yoga, they sneak on our beaches. I shouldn't say sneak, they use our beaches. The issue is really liability, and so we thought as a committee that that was a fair price. We just sort of came up with that price. As you know, most of these types of activities don't charge a lot of fees for this, you know, it's like $5 a day, or $10, or something like that, so.
So, I had two questions.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Are they paying liability insurance?
Yes, they'll be, they'll have insurance.
Okay. And for the group training, the Tough X group training?
Mm-hmm.
What type of equipment are they planning to bring on the beach?
I don't know.
Because they say they're going to have equipment.
Okay, I don't have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
Okay, and.
We're, tonight, we're not really approving these applications, we're really just approving the fee. So we didn't meet with the applicants.
Right, so that's where I guess I have questions.
Okay.
One more. Where, where are they planning to do this?
Well, again, that would be up to the beach staff, because as you may be aware, we clean the beach every day. We usually clean the South Beach one day and the North Beach the next day. So we want to make sure that they don't interfere with our beach cleaning. So we would really leave that up to the beach staff as to where they would be.
And how would the beach staff then notify the applicant where to go? Would it change, or?
No, they probably put them on a schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Practically, how would that work?
In that vein, I guess my only concern with that is to make sure that we don't still have people, right? The beach staff has to now be in charge of these people and their spots.
Right.
But also patrolling the beach so the other people aren't sneaking on the fee or the insurance.
What's happened in the past is that, you know, Joe's down there very early, so he ends up chasing people off the beach. So he will know, you know, who is, who has a permit and who doesn't.
Okay. So then the second point, the more important point for me is, I think, I think last session, work session, we talked about this a little bit, and I think the idea was to get a list of towns that, what other towns do, right? So if it's from Point Pleasant to Seabright, if there's 10 towns that don't charge at all, we should have a list of those towns. If there, or this would be my vision of like, just like, and it could be, it could be a memo to us, it could be an email, but just so we have that information, what towns charge, and how much they charge, what towns don't handle it whatsoever, what towns allow it for free.
Yeah.
Right, and then what do those towns do about insurance? Right, so that's what I guess I'd be looking for, and I don't know if that's calls to the city clerks, or that's just.
No, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, that would help me to.
We'll get you a list.
Get a better.
These will probably come back for approval at the next meeting. Again, we're just trying to come to some type of agreement on the fee right now.
And I guess I would just put information before.
But we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And Tom, is one hour five days a week?
Well, no, some of them don't, some of them just want to do it a couple times a week, and the boot camp wants to do it on the weekend, so they would just be a Saturday, Sunday. But we would have a schedule, you know, when they get the approval, they'll be on, they'll definitely have a schedule as to what they're going to be doing.
Okay, so we'll have that before we have to vote on these, right?
Yes.
What other towns do?
Yep. Yep. And then, just to make things interesting, one of the applications came from Teo, who's in town here, a spa, spa massage business on Bangs Avenue. They'd like to operate every single day, and the difference between their application and these other ones is they'd like to have a permanent spot on the, on the beach with a tent, and.
With a tent?
So I see this more along the lines of issuing an RFP, very similar to what the surf camp does and the stand-up paddleboard. So that's, that was the feeling of the special events committee.
What do they want to do?
Massage.
Massage.
They want to put a permanent structure.
Massages.
They want to put a permanent structure in one place, so that's why, again, it's like the stand-up paddleboard is like everything else. We'd have to RFP it and put a minimum bid on it.
Right.
If, before we do that, let's see if they're still interested with that answer.
Yes.
Because that's not waste money.
Right, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure.
And that was the.
That's Vivian, right?
Yes.
But the entire committee agreed upon that, just like.
And it would.
It would be like, yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question on any of these items, but I have a question I'd like to ask you.
Sure.
Should I ask you now, or wait till the council?
No, you can ask me that.
Okay. I understand that we're not going to be having a jazz fest this year or a gospel fest.
That's correct.
And I, I wanted to know why, because there have been a lot of calls in reference to the gospel fest. People have volunteered. I don't know if they know the procedures to go, how to go about it, but there was various churches volunteering to put on a gospel fest. And there's, we have a lot of other people that would like to be a part of the jazz fest. So should I talk to you?
Yes, you can talk to me, but what happened is.
Is this final, that it will not be a jazz fest?
Yes. You know, we don't have a production company to do the event. We went out to bid before this event, we only got one proposal, and.
Since January?
Yes. But we're very late in going out to bid. The way these festivals work is they have to be, they're funded by sponsorships, so they have to go out early to get those sponsorships. And my recommendation would be for next year that we go out for bid now. The time to get sponsorship is in September and October, when companies are making up their budgets, so that they budget for the sponsorship. But we got one proposal, and that proposal really was from somebody who wanted to do it a couple years ago, and they just indicated that it was too late for them, they couldn't raise the money to do the, do the event. You know, the event, to do it well, you have to raise at least $35,000 to make that event work.
So why don't we go out to bid now for it?
We can.
That's a problem, that, it seems the logical thing. I mean, when we say now, I mean, if we get it out by midsummer, we're ahead of the game.
Right.
We already have the RFP drafted, we just have to reissue with new dates updated accordingly.
No problem.
So just do it for, let's just.
Yeah, I was just going to, let's just do it now, so it's off the list.
Not this, but next minute.
Right.
Yeah, but just.
Unless you're going to commit to remembering in six months?
No, 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 I totally agree, no. Just sort of, but me, but we've never had a gospel fest. So if somebody wants to have a gospel fest, they should let us know, and we'll go out RFP for that too. We've had a jazz fest, we started off two days of jazz, and then halfway through, or three quarters way through.
No, Saturday was jazz, and Sunday was gospel.
Right, but they changed it. One day it was jazz, one day it was gospel, and then the last concert, there was no jazz.
Right.
It was all gospel. So if somebody's looking to put on a gospel fest, we can RFP that, awesome. But I mean, I think before.
Yeah, in the past, they've had, it's been a two-day festival, Saturday was jazz, and the Sunday was traditionally gospel music is the way it's been when we've had it. So, so we'll go out to bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just have two public service announcements that I'd like to make. One is this weekend is skate and surf.
Is that this weekend?
We're expecting probably 10,000 people to come each day, which will probably cause some issues as far as traffic and parking, so our residents should just be aware of that. And the other announcement is that to get the public, to get the parking lot done here, the Department of Public Works is actually going to close the parking lot from Wednesday, May 13th, to Wednesday, May 20th.
That is key, that we get that out there to the public, and how do people get in?
Well, it's on the website right now.
I know that by me, okay.
When you get in?
Right, say, I want to come in and pay my tax bill, and, okay, so you can't come into the parking lot. Are we going to open up this door and bring people in through this way? I mean, we have to.
Talking about having the Bangs Avenue entrance, so.
Okay, we have to have a plan, because people have to get to court, people have to pay their bills, people have to pick up licenses, people have to do business, mercantile license, everything, so.
Yep.
Yeah, this is going to be.
A mess.
A logistical nightmare, but something like, the more we prepare for it, the less the nightmare, so.
There's only two days to prepare, there's only one day to prepare tomorrow, because it starts Wednesday. So you got to decide now, right?
Start milling, start milling the parking lot.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah, no, it's.
They'll close the parking lot on Wednesday.
So tomorrow, you got to have a plan, and then I would, I would email, put it up on Nextdoor. If you email it to me, I'll put it up on Facebook and Twitter.
Okay.
But yeah, I think it's, I think it's something we should head out before.
And so, preliminary notices from B and C, and everybody went out with the time frame, so this is just a reminder. I deeply appreciate this.
Yeah, the first notice, the first notice went out, then it was going to be this week, but it didn't indicate that the parking lot was going to be totally closed for a whole week.
Do you know what you're going to do, Tony? Where are you, where are you telling people to go?
For the employees, all right, we're going to be using the back lot. We're going to also be shutting off the, like, the South parking lot, all right? The South parking lot will be used for, all right, employees, but it'll be used for court on Friday.
And what are you doing with the public?
Public parking would also be the South lot, or out here on Bangs Avenue.
So people would come in what door?
I don't, I don't know.
We're going to, we're going to have the Bangs Avenue door open here.
Okay.
All right, we're going to have the, make sure that people know that they could use the back doors, all right, that face the.
Okay, okay.
The tracks.
And you'll put signs up?
There'll be signs up.
And maybe put signs up on the election board if you can?
Yeah, absolutely, as quick as possible. Can they also use during the day the Bangs Avenue parking garage and walk two blocks? Just because by parking the Bangs Avenue parking lot and walk two blocks and come in this door, it's probably easier than parking in the South lot and like walking all the way around Main Street and coming here is probably a shorter route.
Will you consider that? We'd have to.
Well, that's a talk to them, because, you know, the garage is open for public parking every day.
Right.
But you have to pay a fee to park in there.
But we have so many spots.
75 that aren't identified though.
They do.
But what about parking on Memorial Side?
The way they operate is by a card, you know.
Okay.
We don't have public parking.
Because there's a guy there, he can't.
Yeah, but we have, we'll have to talk to him and see if we can work out some type of arrangement.
What about parking in the Memorial Avenue parking lot and coming from the transportation center? Yeah, we're talking about that.
Are we going to have patrol, police, we have police patrol in the area?
There'll be a police presence.
Good, because you have court, right? You're going to have court this week.
Friday will be court.
And people are going to be all over the place if you don't guide them.
But they'll have Main Street, they'll have Bangs Ave, they'll have Memorial.
They'll have Main Street, they'll have Central.
They'll be all up in here.
Yeah. So you, would you have somebody stationed here so they know? Okay.
Right, because you got to have somebody stationed here, you got to have somebody stationed through finance, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
The hallway and everything, so, yeah.
And we lock up our equipment, right, for AP TV?
Yes.
Of course we do. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I just want to make sure we locked it, I just want to make sure we locked it.
But something that has to be done, and we all knew would be logistically tough, but I'm sure we'll get through it. And we'll get complaints, we'll work them out.
We know we'll get the complaints.
Okay. As long as we're proactive and not reactive.
Afterwards.
Yeah. Good.
Anything else for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving down your agenda to presentations, letter C. All right, your first presentation is going to be by the Beautification Project for Merchants Park, presented by the Environmental Commission.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Mike Sedano.
I'm Scott Naan.
Tom Pavinski. Can I ask a question before we start? Where is Liberty Park?
Library Park. People call it Liberty, I don't know why.
I had never heard of it, if I asked, okay, good. And also, if you can charge somebody a fee for doing yoga on the beach or whatever, can you give that to the Environmental Shetree Commission? We don't get anything from the city, I thought maybe some of those fees we could collect.
Good pitch, Tom, good pitch.
We begging, we begging skip to the ball, so.
You should make a request to the city to fund you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you should make a new request to the new council to fund you.
I will.
Okay.
Just say your name and residence.
I did, but I'll say it again. Mike Sedano, resident and merchant, 1,004 Fourth Avenue, 707 Cookman Avenue. We had an idea, a group of merchants had on Cookman Avenue had an idea to take the sad-looking piece of property that's at the corner of Main and Cookman, which sure enough, through some research, is actually zoned as a public park, and actually has a name called Merchants Park, to beautify that park and make it a kind of iconic gateway to the downtown. There's really no iconic look to the downtown. Whenever anybody thinks about Asbury Park, they think about various icons on the boardwalk, but the downtown needs, could use a gateway. And that park has sat there, and nobody really notices it, and there must be thousands of people who sit at that traffic light every day, and it's totally ignored. So we had the idea to dress it up, and we went to Don Sammet. He said to us that the park is zoned as a park, and then we made a presentation to the Environmental Shetree Commission and asked them for their help, and Tom and the group took the banner and started, started putting some ideas together.
We also wanted to work with, Scott Naan, resident and merchant, resident and merchant, 704, 706 Cookman Avenue. We also wanted to work with Arts Cap to have a, an iconic kind of statue or lettering or something at the corner of the park, so there's either a statue or Asbury Park spelled out in big block letters. The idea was to have something in the downtown where people took pictures, and they were downtown. And we would like some lighting in the park too, but we thought with this statue or statues that we would work with Arts Cap, we would do a competition at some point to have a public statue there in the park too, so.
All right. Where the Environment Shetree Commission comes into play, we invited master gardeners from Monmouth County to come in, and they've created a couple of concepts that are sort of broad in their sketching, but which will help us in terms of planning exactly how we want to redo the park. One of the first things that's going to have to happen, since the park was, actually was created in 1976, and those trees were planted, nothing's ever been done there. Probably the only thing that gets done on a regular basis is all the snow and all the, all the salt and so forth from the streets during the summer, during the winter, gets dumped on that park. So the ground is really pretty awful. It's also very compacted, it's about that hard, and very little is going to grow. At the present moment, there are seven trees there, all of which are blighted and are all going to eventually die. They have, we have, I think, three or four Norway maples, which are an invasive species and shouldn't be planted, but way back in the 70s, they were the tree de rigueur, so everybody planted them. They're not good trees to have there. Thankfully, not thankfully, they're dying, so we really can remove them without any kind of remorse. There are also some flowering cherries there, which are blighted and need to be removed. removed, so all the trees will eventually be removed from that property with the understanding that the trees are going to be replaced. We're not just going to strip the trees away and put nothing else there. So the park is going to, if you can envision, the eastern end of the park where the driveway or there's an alleyway where Brando's is, we're going to have large jetty rocks that are going to reflect the jetty rocks that are in the rain garden at the present time, and they've been donated to us already by iStar, and they're going to probably put those in place sometime next week. What that's going to do is two things, it'll prevent the DPW from dumping all that stuff into the park during the winter, and it'll also prevent Brando's from parking in the park when they have what they call valet parking. So it's going to preserve the park, which is what we should do because it is a, it's a green space and it should be protected by us. We have, I have spoken with Brando's and have already given them the understanding that what we want to do is to beautify the park and make it certainly more attractive for everyone and especially for them, and I also notified them that the sidewalk that runs alongside their building where they have their air conditioning equipment and a shed and a few other things are all illegal because that all belongs to the park. The survey of the park says that everything goes right to the building itself, so what they have there is really not supposed to be there. However, what I did say very clearly was, we have no intention of creating any problems, we have no intention of asking them to remove that, we have no intention of making any kind of a fuss, they can leave it there, and of course I asked them for a donation as a result so that we could perhaps plant some trees along that space, which would continue to hide those things that they have. I think it would be counterproductive and I think it would be certainly in poor spirit of the city to say, well, now you've got to get rid of all that stuff when they've already been given approval to do that somewhere along the line. So Brando's is on board and they know what we're going to be doing. The park is going to be done in phases, simply because it's too much to get done at one time. One of the first things we want to do is we're going to move six of the trees right off the bat. There will be one tree left on the eastern end, and that will remain there probably for a year or two, and once those trees are removed, we're then going to bring in the jetty rocks, and at that point, we're going to have to till all the soil, we'll probably have to replace some of the soil, we'll probably have to get topsoil and amendments in order to make the soil productive. And that's going to take, I would say, a good part of this year, probably up until at least August, maybe even September. And in September, what we'd like to do is to begin planting spring bulbs for next year, which will come up in the spring of 16, and also begin planting perennials. The garden is going to be comprised of trees, ornamental trees, things like eastern red buds, southern magnolias, service berry, and also perennials, hostas, ferns, things that are going to come up every single year and don't need constant care and attention, most of which are also indigenous, so we don't have to worry about them very much. This is all going to be funded by the merchants, they're going to start doing some hard advertising and begging, and if there's any monies in the Environmental Shetree Commission coffers after we finish working on the fence here around the community garden, we'll be able to donate some of that as well. So we're hoping that the first part of it will be done up until September. We're going to use the old bricks and the old Belgium blocks that are all the way over on the Seventh Avenue, what do you call that, John?
Waterworks.
The water, yeah, right. There's a whole bunch of bricks and things that were taken up from Springwood Avenue a long time ago, and they're just there, they're sort of an eyesore. We're going to take them and we're going to reuse them, and we're going to widen the paths a little bit and make it a much more inviting kind of a place for people to stay. If we can keep the sidewalks that are there now, we're going to, we're hoping not to have to replace those, because when the trees come up, they're old trees, they've been there since 76, you know there's a good root system and they may possibly uproot some of the sidewalks, but I think in general, we're pretty safe that we won't have to do too much of that. So we're going to widen those sidewalks, we're going to make them more attractive, we're going to create beds, and, and eventually, we're going to have some kind of iconic sculpture, which will be a real welcome to Asbury Park. So that's our plan, and like I always like to say when I come to the city council, it's not going to cost you any money and you don't have to do the work, so that's what we're planning.
Well, looking at your past projects, be it the Trolley Park, be it the-
Rain Garden.
Rain Garden, be it out here, thank you.
Pleasure.
And I know it'll be beautiful. Yeah, my total support.
So, Tom, when you go through the accounting for, so, so Merchants Park's going to, you're going to raise money and just use as donations, okay.
Yeah, it's going to be done in phases, so that's going to help, you know, Tom's kind of outlined, you know, you know, over the course of, I mean, all the way through to 2016 is, is when it'll be done, but in order to, in order to get it started, in order to get it going, you know, we have to make these first couple improvements and then we'll, we'll be, it'll be an ongoing project, basically.
And Mike and, and Scott and Jan Sparrow from Words have put together a group called, Merchants, called Asbury Shuffle, and we had a great meeting last week and a whole lot of merchants were there.
Thirty.
Yeah, thirty. And one of the things that I said to them, and I'll say it to you because you're going to hear about it, is that as soon as the trees come down, you're going to have people calling and decrying the fact that we're killing trees. Well, you can tell them one, the trees are blighted, which means that they're on their way to die, and secondly, all the trees will be replaced, it might even be extra trees, so it's not a question of just ripping out the trees and leaving an empty space, they will be replaced and we're taking those out simply because they're no longer living well.
And with native trees, with red bud and service berry and, I know your trees that naturally grow.
Right, we're putting things that should, much like the rain garden, we have things that are indigenous, so they don't require all that attention and all that time, and they grow well in our particular-
And when are you going to start?
I'm sorry?
When are you going to start?
Soon as you say go ahead, we'll have those trees ripped out before you can get home.
Go ahead.
I promise you.
Yes, that's great.
Thank you so much.
I have one other thing, though, and this is, this is not with these fellows, this
is with the Environmental Shetree Commission. Several years ago, we started raising money for different events and so on and so forth, we didn't know what to do with the money that we had, and we were encouraged at that point to put it into an account here in the city, and we do that, and I have to tell you, that is a pain in the, you know where, because trying to get money from them takes weeks and weeks and sometimes months, and you get all kinds of conditions and all kinds of hemming and all kinds of hawing, and I have been, I've gotten to the point now where I've gotten a bank, I've gotten a bank grant of $750, I've gotten a business grant of a hundred, fifteen hundred dollars, several people in town have given me $200 individually, and I dread putting it into the account because every time I give them a bill, it's going to take me four or five weeks before I get my money back. I'm the only person who uses the account, I'm the only person who actually ever buys anything or, nobody else on the commission does that, but it's, it's really a pain. I have to put all those things on my credit card and then I have to wait, and I wait, and I wait. I've gotten to the point now where I've already called Providence Bank and asked them, because by the way, Providence Bank with whom the city does no business scandalously, they have given us two grants in the amount of $2,500 for the, for the community garden, and this past year when I asked them for an extra, extra money, they said, you know, we love the fact that you're doing it and we're really pleased that you're doing it, but you guys don't do any business with us. And I said, and I, I had to admit it, I said, I have no control over that, but they still came through and gave us 750. So the first grant was 1,500, the second grant was 1,000, and this one was $750, because I know them and they know me and they know what we're doing. I'm tempted to try to open an account there, just, but I don't, I don't know if I can do that legally if it's, you know, named Asbury Park and all that kind of a stuff, but it would make it so much simpler to have a checkbook, write out a check, buy the stuff and let it go, rather than having to go through these hooplas.
Tony, I think I emailed you about this too, right, just that it's all of the Environment and Shetree Commission's money, why does it take so long to get access to it?
Once it goes into, all right, the city, any of the city trust accounts, you have to go through the basic procurement process.
And how long is that procurement process supposed to take?
It usually takes, you know, two to three weeks. It depends on how many council meetings we have because, all right, you put your purchase requisition in, all right, you don't purchase before the requisition goes in, all right, once it's in, you have the, all right, the ability to buy something, all right, and then the vendor at the next council meeting through bill resolution, all right, the bill is paid.
So if Tom's saying it's taking months, right, you're saying it's not taking two to three weeks?
Not only that, but I mean, I, I need to buy trowels and I need to buy forks or I need to buy shovels. I can't buy them because I have to put a requisition in, then I have to wait three weeks before they say yes. Well, I've wasted three weeks in the garden because I have nothing to work with. I can go online, order my trowels or my shovels, order my, my spades, and I'll have them in three days and I have a bill, but they, I can't do that because you have to give them it beforehand. Well, you don't always know, I go to the markets to get plants and they have a sale, they have perennials, they cost them $10 each, they're having a sale, you can get six for $10. Well, who the hell's not going to take advantage of six for $10? I am, but I can't because I can't have the money. Well, it's crazy.
It's something we can look into, Tony's right, under state law, we have to do things how the state says, but-
Well, can I, can I raise money and not put it into the city account?
That's the next question I'm going to ask either Fred, I mean, why can't you start a, what, a 501(c), why can't you start a nonprofit and just do that?
Well, they could, but then that's, there's a process involved with that, that takes a little time to get a nonprofit established and then get by ONC three designation, I mean, that is a vehicle that they could proceed with, or it could be entirely through the merchants and not through the city. And with regard to the Providence Bank, we could certainly add Providence as an additional official depository of the city. We adopted a resolution at the re-earthing meeting that established the official depositories. If we're not already doing business with Toronto, then there's no reason why the city council couldn't add them as an additional official depository of the city and then start doing more with Providence.
Well, part of the reason, and that's the subject we'll get into down the road when Mr. Garcia, part of the reason we didn't choose some banks, we went out to bid, and the banks that gave us the best deals are the banks we went with, banks that could provide us with credit card machines, we went with, so I don't know where Providence fell into the line, but obviously, they did not give us the best deal for the city. It might be the best deal for you, but again, being a city on transitional aid, we had to take the best deal for the city as far as banking services.
So other departments in town have blanket POs that they use, where they go to the hardware to write fires, the main one, police, can, can the Environmental Commission do a blanket PO?
That's not a bad idea.
It's not a bad idea, but I'll see if we can do it against a trust account.
He's, he's, he's said to me, I can buy things up to $200, I can buy them and then submit the bill and eventually, and as the money goes down, they'll keep resupplying it, but the problem is, if you're building a fence, I need $2,100, $2,160. I've got $2,600 in the account already, but I can't get it, and so the fence is standing there.
Well, the fence is a separate one, though, Tom, that's its own monster, but the blanket PO, so he could just-
I can do that.
Have access, okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
$200. Is that how the other blanket POs work?
No, 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 the other blanket POs are higher.
Some are a lot higher than that.
Some are higher.
Maybe we could get a higher limit on them. Did the house outside already use?
I don't need a higher limit, Joe, I mean, 200 is perfectly fine, that's not my issue. The issue is that when I have stuff like this, I have a guy who wants to pull it up for me for nothing, but he can't because he can't, you can't pay for it.
Well, maybe we can make it like 3,000 or something, you can spend like that.
I'll talk to Ricky Gartz tomorrow.
Lucky if you find him.
I'll find him.
I'll find him.
For a week.
I'll find him. But we're, we're, you're working on the fence, right, because we touched base about this last week.
Yeah, the purchase rec should, should be in, same.
He'll be for the next meeting.
When, when you say the next meeting, Wednesday?
I have no idea, I was told the next meeting.
Okay.
You can't get specifics here.
Okay.
I'll talk to Ricky tomorrow about the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to be clear, it's council consensus to authorize moving forward with this project as presented to you this evening, just for the record.
Correct.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey, Tony, before we go any further, Cindy Dye from DEP's here.
Cindy Dye's our co-host.
I mean, Cindy Mabuza from DEP's here, but it's going to be on Wednesday night's agenda, correct? So I mean, is there any reason she has to sit through all this?
If there's any questions, sure.
Was it on that? It's not on the-
No, yes it is, it's someplace in the-
On the workshop?
Yeah.
Not on the works.
No.
We're in the schedule for your consideration for introduction on Wednesday.
Right, I saw it.
Deal Lake dredging, easily.
I had like minor, minor questions, I don't even know if they need to happen now or in email, like.
Well, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather-
Let's move it out now and address it now.
Okay, fine, the question is now, or I'd rather send her home now and say, come back Wednesday instead of her sitting here all night and we don't address it.
Good idea.
But it's going to be on the agenda Wednesday.
Was there some questions?
Before you come to the table, please, I'm sorry, Cindy.
What was the number?
I'm only used to one, Cindy.
You know, there were questions back.
I don't think, I honestly don't think, I think there was like a date on there that was funny.
2014 on the back page, it was a boilerplate date that was corrected.
Okay, that's on the back page, so is it, okay.
That was corrected.
Should have been minor one, I mean, they're probably not even anything to work.
The question I asked as far as like putting the site back to order, we had inclement weather, we're supposed to be done by December 31st, language has been addressed to that, where if it can't be done because of inclement weather, they'll come back after December 31st, so my questions have been answered.
Okay, that's what I thought, so what we need right now is just the date change on the, on the back page.
Right, which was part of my original questions also, it was a boilerplate, 2004, right.
Right.
I think it was, yes.
Okay.
I had one question.
But it's still on mine.
Make sure you get me a copy.
And then my only other question I had was, and this is for John, because he had worked out the details, was this the route?
The truck route?
It was, it wasn't, I thought it was, okay.
It was Deal Lake Drive to 71, Deal Lake Drive, R3 blocks, to 71, to 71, to Corley's, to, in Neptune, to out, to Monmouth County dump, where we're taking them, yes.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure, that was, that was, that was it.
My question is, are there any penalties if it's not completed within the timeframe that they've guaranteed us?
Well, there's money attached to, the money's attached to it, so that's kind of the, the monies that, that, for this project are attached to it, that's what's kind of driving the time, timeline. I'm trying to, I know your question, and it's been answered before, the penalty is,
if they don't spend this money by December 31st, it disappears.
Right.
By state and federal law, so, and they do not get paid upfront, they get paid upon completion, and we, we hope, you, we, being you, hold money in escrow to make sure it's completed.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, and, and like I said, we're not going anywhere, so it's one of those things, anything that you need in communications, anything that you need working for, we're, we're not going anywhere, we'll be here to help you, I will be here to help you.
If anybody has any other questions, they can, like Fred said, they can be added on Wednesday and everything, I'm sure, we're all in this together and we want this to work. But I just don't want you to sit all here tonight and like say, why was I here?
Yeah.
I know you had a long drive. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry.
The next item on your agenda, all right, C2, all right, I'd like to introduce Robert Cull from Metro, our company is a consultant to the city, on our community development block plans.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, this is Deputy Mayor, Member of Council. Thank you for the invitation to be here tonight to preview on the outlines of the five-year consolidated housing plan and your annual action plan for, for housing. The, these are two products that are done from time to time, my, I should introduce myself again, my name is Bob Cull, I'm a licensed planner, American Institute Certified Planner, and a senior associate with Metro Company, I've done work with the city, Metro's I've done work with the city, Metro's done work with the city before, prior consolidated plan, your analysis of impediments to fair housing and similar work. The purpose of the consolidated housing plan is set up by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Is to establish a five-year vision for housing and community development in the city and it's required by HUD to access the federal funding program that HUD provides. In Bradsbury Park specifically, it provides your means to access the community development block grant funds that HUD provides. So the main elements of that consolidated housing plan are defining goals, objectives, and performance measures and streamlines HUD's application process so you don't have to present all that information every year as you pursue your grants and ensures that the funds are for projects that are in the context of the city's plan. The annual action plan is the mechanism that provides the funding from year to year and is by federal fiscal year, which is the October 1st to September 30th fiscal year. HUD has approved for, the current fiscal year has recently approved, an allocation to the city of $386,067 for the current fiscal year. The annual action plan allocates all these funds for the community development block program to various activities that I'll describe in a moment. There's no local match required for these funds. There is a potential for an additional allocation from HUD of about $51,017 in federal funds if HUD wins litigation with Westchester County, New York, for that county's failure to meet HUD requirements, including having an adequate analysis of impediments to fair housing, similar to the one that, well, we provided for your approval in 2013. When and if these funds are approved, the department, HUD, will seek to update, well, department, your community development department will seek to update the plan following another public hearing. The community development block grant program funds community development projects, including housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, construction or rehabilitation of public facilities and infrastructure, removal of architectural barriers, and assistance to homeless persons and families. So while, as a planner, I witnessed your work, Don Samus' work in revitalizing portions of the city, but generic redevelopment does not address all the city's housing problems and will not over the next five years, so this kind of plan is and remains important. The low-income, substandard housing and employment characteristics of many Asbury Park households demonstrates the need for continued support and more focused services. The community development department seeks to implement and continue strategies that address the needs of the underserved and the challenges of redeveloping long deteriorating areas in the city's southwest quadrant. So the Metro Company's role was to work with your community development director, Cassandra Dickerson, to organize a city's submitted to HUD in consultation with the department and coordination with Monmouth County. The actual submitted to HUD is through a series of online forms and it prints out about 100 pages or so. Public comment is a part of this process. A public hearing was held in this room on March 10th and with four individuals in attendance, no public comments were received by the end of the public comment period in April 9th. The department has recommended approval for funding 17 lines of projects over the next fiscal year for that $386,067. You have the executive summary before you and I'll just summarize them unless you have questions. There are eight grants in the public services area. There is $176,000 in requests, $40,000 were proposed, approved, eight public services grants. In facility rehabilitation grants, there were three lines approved, $386,000 of requests and $150,000 approved or recommended for approval. And there were six other projects that would be performed by the city totaling $196,067. So it's total of 17 projects for the allocation of $386,067. If you'd like, I can go into individual projects, although my understanding is that Deputy Mayor Quinn was a member of the committee that discussed the allocation and-
Yeah, no, and I can do a 30-second summary on it. We created a scale. We extended the period of time to apply for these programs because the feedback we got was that our period of time was too short. I think Joe was one of the people that brought that up. We extended it, I think, for well over a month. We brought people in who met the scale. We narrowed the top people based on the scale. Then we interviewed people, talked about, you know, nobody got what they asked for, clearly. There isn't that much money to get what you asked for, so using, you know, Hope Academies' after-school program, they asked for $10,000, we gave them $5. So all of the people who got money came into the city, went through our committee with questions, went through the different allocations that they would potentially get. None of them were going to get what they asked for. And we also created a follow-up program to then check on these programs to make sure that they are doing what they told us they were going to do, both on the scale and in the committee. And if they aren't, that's an issue, and if they are, great. You know, this is the first time the grant has been handled this way. I think it was handled, you know, pretty well. We tried to be transparent. We had the public in. We didn't exclude the public. And these are the, these are the, these are the programs that, you know, met our scale and that did, you know, what we thought the, we thought held the spirit of the, of the community development block grant.
Yeah, I think they're like great programs and I really, forever I've been hearing about what Interfaith is doing there with the problem of young people couch surfing in the neighborhood or even the need for a homeless facility for young adults. So I think that's an awesome project. Unfortunately, we need it in our community. So I just had a question for you. So this is, this is for next year.
This allocation is for the current year.
Yeah, 2015.
Right, 2015. So just because I don't know exactly, I don't understand, when it says a five-year consolidated plan, what's the five-year component of it?
The overall objectives and kind of the standards by which you'll be doing the annual plans in subsequent years.
Okay. So this is the guide, these will guide the four years remaining?
Yes, and what we submit is kind of a two-part document, which is the five-year plan plus the one-year action plan.
Also, all the recipients were known that if they can't do their, obviously if they can't do the program and what we allotted them, they have to obviously give the money back.
I have a question about the housing rehabilitation. What's included in that? What can be done? I mean, I know we can do new rules, oil heaters, furnace. What about exterior work to a home? Painting, whatever?
I'm not sure about the particular line item that it might fall in and Ms. Dickerson will probably have the better idea of how things work at a particular given time, but there are funds that are used for that, including the help program, the home emergency loan program as well, but they are very limited funds. So when you're talking about how can these funds be used, it's not going to be something that makes a huge impact for a neighborhood, but it does make a significant impact for a household.
This should also not be confused with the RCA program.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, this is purely the federal funds.
Thank you.
So what we're seeing now is the 2015 plan because a month ago, there was no money in the relocation, so that's been changed.
We are going to have to change, we're going to have to put money into relocation.
We did put money into.
Yes.
On this, it says relocation $20,000.
That's the old.
This is a new. Because we were told there was no money in relocation.
Originally, there was no money. All right.
So this has already been changed to correct that problem.
Yes, HUD only provided its official numbers as far as its allocation for the city within the past 60 days or so, and I saw the numbers change a few times as well. So what we have before us from, that has a HUD seal on it, is the $386,067. So it's only after that approval does the city have access to those funds.
We need to double check.
Who do I double check with?
Cassandra.
Who do I double check with?
I'll deal with Ricky tomorrow.
I mean, I'm reading this, I'm reading this, so I gotta think this is the truth.
Yeah, no, I thought Cassandra put the relocation assistance back in it. Didn't we have a lengthy meeting about this? I think, I think that somebody should double check.
It shows in the budget.
Okay, page, page three of three. Explain that. Break that down into common John Moore English. Somebody in New York isn't getting money and we may get a piece of $51,000 or all $51,000?
A piece of it. No, actually, the $51,000, that would be, you would receive the $51,000 should the litigation be settled in HUD's favor. What's happening is that in Westchester County, funds were allocated without, without a five-year plan that met HUD's requirements and without really dealing with the kinds of fair housing issues of dealing with protected classes of households by age, race, disability, and so on. And as a result of failing to meet those requirements, HUD was looking to reallocate all the money that the entire county of Westchester was receiving. So the $51,000 is a, is an allocation of that county's, reallocation of that county's entire funds.
Okay, why would Asbury get the $51,000? Because alphabetically, I mean, why?
Well, there'd be an allocation, I'd probably proret it for all the, all the HUD grantees, all the CDG, BG grantees throughout the HUD's region, which is New York, New Jersey, and I think Puerto Rico.
And what would be the time?
Is there any part of the allocation?
It's unknown. It's in the course. It's possible that it could approve to the next fiscal year. But they didn't say that as they looked at the allocation of it would be, and as soon as that became available, it would be an opportunity for the city. I believe the city chose to not allocate those funds right now, not knowing if it was imminent or next year. So it's easy enough to hold another public hearing, which would be part of that process for any new applicants to federal funds.
Okay, tough question. We could substant, we could be fined for some foul. Is that reflected in this $386,000 or so?
That would be in the 2016 months.
Okay, so no fine is in 2015?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today.
It's pending, it's pending, so.
Item number three on your presentations, all right, the handicap parking space removal. We have Police Officer Joe Piori.
After reviewing the handicap parking ordinances for the city, we determined that there are numerous ones that could be removed from the city code. However, there were several problems, two problems that we found. One that was located on Deal Lake Drive, there was no ordinance number. It was a handicap parking space that was adopted many years ago and there was no ordinance number to be found. So I listed the description of what's found in the ordinance. And that same goes with the Third Avenue one at the bottom, the location. There was no ordinance number found with that name.
Okay.
The other ones, one on First Avenue, one on Second Avenue, and three on Sixth Avenue are no longer needed. Either the residents have unfortunately expired, moved on, no longer drive, and those handicapped spaces are no longer needed. So it's our recommendation that the spaces are removed from city code.
Good job and I thank you, parking, you're endeared to all of us. The only thing I would ask from here on out, could you give us like addresses? Because as much as like Second Avenue, where's 274th, I'm just picking, it's going to say 60 feet from here or anything, but just put close to 1123 Second.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Good job.
I will prepare an ordinance that will give you a piece from city code for consideration on your next council meeting and will include the specifics of the ordinance.
Okay. It's just easier for me to drive by instead of like, you know, calling up Cindy, saying, how many feet is that from like the corner of Langford?
Absolutely.
No, Joel, thank you.
Have a question, Joe.
Yes.
Do you also, are you also looking to put in additional handicap parking spaces?
There have been some recommendations, different spaces. One of them was in the area of 1701 Ocean Avenue. Lake Avenue, I believe one was already proposed.
Let me pass it.
Okay.
Okay, Asbury Towers?
Asbury Towers, yes.
That's the 1701.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the fourth item on the presentations, all right, Fire Chief Kevin Keddie, all right, regarding fire apparatus acquisitions motion.
In January, I came before you and you passed a resolution for the fire department to accept a surplus fire apparatus from Manasquan Volunteer Engine Company Number Two, which was at no cost, which was a good deal for the city to be used in situations where we didn't want to risk damage to a frontline fire apparatus. Since that time, we've been given a better offer from Ocean Township Fire District Number Two, which is the Wanamassa Fire Company. It's the same situation. It's just that the apparatus that they're offering us is 10 years newer. It's in better condition, it'll perform better, and there'll be less maintenance costs with it. Neither one of these requires any cost to the city as far as the acquisition goes. I would just like you to pass these two resolutions. One, authorizing us to give the rig back to Manasquan and then to accept the newer rig from Wanamassa.
That's fine with me. Great.
Thank you.
And he's resolving it on the agenda for Wednesday.
All right, item number five on the presentations, all right, Predator Responsibility Ordinance, John McGee, all right, Director of Property Improvement.
I submitted with, with the draft of the ordinance, a brief explanation of how it worked and the situations where it would take effect. Essentially, this is an ordinance that would hold creditors responsible for the maintenance, care, and upkeep of properties that were deemed vacant and abandoned after the property has been, foreclosure proceedings have been instituted by the creditor. It's pretty self-explanatory. I don't know, do you want me to go through the whole thing or do you have specific questions about the ordinance that they drafted?
So the only thing was, I didn't have questions. I thought it, so if you go to page two of the ordinance.
Yes.
And go to letter C. Residential property shall be consistent with section blah, 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 blah. Residential real estate for which a notice of violation has been pursuant to section 13, three, period, three of this chapter, blah, 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 where a notice of violation has not been issued pursuant to, and then it's all the same sections? I didn't under, it seemed like it was the same sentence over again with the same sections recited, but one has a not in it and one doesn't.
Right. It's two different situations. The 13, three would be where I found as the city's public officer that would be, you know, in charge with implementing this, that we would issue a notice to a creditor that has instituted the foreclosure proceeding and the property, if we determined the property, that the creditor's violated the ordinance by not maintaining the property, et cetera, and that the property was then banned by the people living there. So in that case, that's what the first part of that paragraph addresses. And then the second part is where that has not happened. It's just saying that, that those properties, and it goes through the list, which are taken right from the statute of what's deemed vacant and abandoned. I don't necessarily know that it is really, it needs to be in here. I used a model of an ordinance from the, one of the organizations that, you know, provides information for this, these types of ordinances. So I, the way I read it, I honestly felt that that could be pulled out.
All right, I didn't understand it, so I mean, I'll defer to you if you want to keep it in or pull it out. I just didn't understand it.
Honestly, I think if you pull it out, it reads fine. And it does the same thing.
On page three.
Yes.
Item number 13. I just want to make sure I understand it. The mortgaging or other authorized party has secured or winterized the property due to the property being deemed vacant and unprotected or in danger of freezing. Because they're taking care of the property, then what?
Again, that's, that, these are, it has to be two of those conditions and that was, let's see, the mortgaging would be where the creditor steps in and they go to secure or winterize the property due to the property being vacant. In other words, the owner of that, they didn't do it, and the creditor didn't do it, they winterized the property. that, they didn't do it, and the creditor didn't do it, they winterized the property. That's one condition, and it has to satisfy another. And that's right from the start.
Okay. Because they're maintaining the property, and they are not, and they're not the owner, they have accepted responsibility, so therefore, okay.
Yeah. That's the thing. It's just.
All right, thank you.
I just had a, one quick question, then one general question. In your memo, you said that all creditors must notify the municipal clerk each time they initiate a foreclosure proceeding after 10 days, survey the summary. And again, my question is, are we ready for that? And then, if not, like, we've had discussion about the rental registry, right?
Right.
Which I would love to, like, how do we just get the wheels rolling?
Yep.
On all of that? Because I would like that stuff to happen.
And is this all part of the same database? Or is this a separate?
It would hopefully be part of the same database.
Right.
Yeah. And that's when we're ready to do that.
Right. Okay. All right.
I'd like to move in that direction.
Yeah. So, and I guess the question, and this is, I guess, for the council, is for the fire, right, Kevin? We're gonna, you absolutely have to wait until 2016, because your funding for it is gonna be based on increasing your.
The recodification, I already changed the ordinances, so that's, we don't have to go through that again. It's when that's adopted, council advisory will be done way before.
Right.
So that'll take care of itself when that's done. The cost is pro-rata.
Right.
I have to review my budget towards the end of the year. If I can get kickoff in October or November, I don't have enough money to do that. I want to start moving in that direction. It's a very good conversation. The company we want to go with is extremely flexible.
Right.
I just need to have that conversation mellowed down with CFO to ensure that everything is no surprise.
And then the same thing would happen with code, right?
Lines, same thing. We can increase our fees, you know, just to be able to deal with that, a few dollars. Because we were given a quote that was $5 per transaction.
Right. So I guess my only, what I would like to do is try to get, jump on it, just like you're saying, if we can start in September, October somehow, and know that once we increase our fees starting, that would we increase the fees for fire? Would we increase as soon as the code changes, Fred? Or we would be increasing them for 2016?
The fees that Kevin just referenced are already part of the product that's coming before you for first reading on the next council meeting, or at least should be addressing it in some manner as part of the recodification. So are those the fees that you're referring to?
Yeah, as well as, I guess, there's new code fees in there as well.
We haven't gotten you ours, but that's what our intention was to do.
Right. So both of those fees, would they change once we adopt, or would they change in 2016?
In case the Fire Department, it would be moved because with the registration fees and the registration notice, it would go out.
Okay, right. The code would be the question.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that.
Okay.
Do you know that, Fred?
I can get back to you on that. You know, the fire piece clearly, it's an annual, and this would be sent out for the next set round of annual fees. But the code fees are not made here, you know, this is a rolling basis. I don't see any reason why they would need to.
Right. I think we need council approval, but not going to be part of the recodification.
Just so we could get a jump on the new year with getting input into there and using the system.
And Kevin and I had a conversation, and we thought, you know, while it's gonna be ideal, if everybody's participating, it actually would be better probably to implement it just to our departments initially, because they can kind of work at any snag.
Right.
Get some of the input, the data into the system, and then bring other departments on board as we go.
Yeah, I think it would make sense if we could get you guys up to speed, considering the matter with that, I think.
Okay.
All right. So we'll find out about the code.
We don't have to wait for the code or the codification. Bring before us an ordinance, change in the fees, and it's over with. I mean.
Right, we can do that. Right, we can do that, and then get rolling on our.
Probably a lot easier and a lot faster. And I'm not 100% convinced of this project. But I mean, if you want to start it, to me, that's the quickest way to do it.
Yeah.
Couple of quick questions. Going to your memo, summary of New Jersey creditor responsibility law. When did it go into effect? Did you say this is a new law? I mean, new law, is it?
It was actually supplemented in 2014. 2012, they passed an act that established a summary action for foreclosure proceedings. And that's kind of where this law started. And then they supplemented it in 2014 to add additional provisions, to have a requirement that out-of-state creditors be required to give notice of an in-state agent that had to be responsible for properties that were in foreclosure but had been vacant or abandoned, or deemed vacant and abandoned.
Okay.
Mayor, I can indicate that a couple of other towns that I do legal work for are also moving forward with a very similar ordinance at the same time.
How many, how many of these have we had since you've been here last August?
I couldn't tell you, because I don't, we don't have a way of tracking right now the foreclosed properties.
The one thing I didn't like about the, it's a state law, it's only for exterior, not interior.
That's correct.
But then we go back to the question Yvonne asked, where on page three, it says the mortgagie winterized property. Well, that's interior. How do we enforce something that's not covered by state law?
That is, that is a condition, in other words, to show that the property is deemed vacant or abandoned. That's not something we would require them to do. In other words, that's just one of the criteria. And if, for example, if the creditor came in and they showed that they took over to secure or winterize the property, and the, there was overgrown or neglected vegetation, the two of those would, together, would allow us to deem the property vacant and abandoned.
Okay. Go to page two, just out of curiosity. The municipal officer, do we have such a job title under our codification? Because we're approving all these job titles tonight. I didn't see that.
Honestly, Mayor, I don't know what my job title is, because it's changed three times, and that's how I was.
Your job title's whatsoever in the ordinance. I don't believe this job title is in any ordinance we're gonna approve Wednesday night. So why would we approve a job title that doesn't exist? And maybe I'm wrong.
I just used what I, the way I was hired. That was the position I was hired as. I'm glad to change that, if you tell me whatever you want me to put in.
I believe this title has also been used in the other ordinance that was adopted, the registration of vacant properties, and that is the formal title that Rob has in his position.
It is?
I mean, I'll double check with Mary Kay Allen.
Director of Property Improvement.
Okay, later on, I'll go through, so one of these ordinances, all the job titles, and I didn't see that. And as far as the state waiver with Rob's job, that wasn't what was applied for with the state waiver. So.
I thought it was Director of Code.
That's what, that's what it was, that's what this state approved. So, I mean, and if it's just a matter of semantics, I don't care, as long as, as long as nobody comes back and sues and say, well, you don't have that job title.
With the new code, we should be consistent, whatever it is.
Right, yeah.
Well, I, when I met with Pam Lamberton, we went through that, and because that was the position that I believed I was hired in, I was positive when I was offered the job that that was a position, title. That's how we changed the new code as it pertains to property maintenance, the new section of the code.
Yeah, no, I know it's been changed.
I'll check the title.
It's been changed in code, but it hasn't been changed in civil service, or it hasn't been changed, when I say code, codification.
Right.
It hasn't been changed in civil service, it hasn't been changed, if you're gonna adopt an ordinance Wednesday night, with all the ask-me job titles, this is not in there.
You'd have to find a comparable title to civil service. I doubt that that title is going to be something that's civil service. They might have a combination of law.
It's, that gives us a curiosity question.
They have the Director of Neighborhood Preservation, they have Director of Property Improvement.
And Code Enforcement. So it's three separate titles under civil service.
Yeah, so we kind of formulated this position to cover what the responsibilities were that I was hired to take care of.
Okay, thank you.
Are there changes you'd like me to make to that, though, before Wednesday?
I'm gonna let Tony look into it with Mary Kay and with the state monitor, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Mark, thank you.
No, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Moving down to letter four, items for discussion. All right, the first one is a request to amend a redevelopment plan. The proposed application procedure in escrow establishment, the former city planner, Don Sammet, had made a presentation to council. This basically was to establish escrow accounts for the developers. In the past, you know, expenses that were incurred for the city were paid out of the city budget. This is requesting that we establish an escrow for all developers, and that all expenses be paid out of that escrow.
And as required by the municipal land use laws, since we're amending the land use and zoning section of city code, was required that the planning board for its review and recommendation, the planning board did make some minor recommendations for addition to the language that Don had originally proposed, and sent it back to the council. Don, before leaving, embraced the language from the planning board and recommends it to the council. So there is an ordinance on the agenda for your consideration for first reading Wednesday that includes the language proposed by the planning board with regard to this particular measure.
Can we, can we get a red line copy of what's changed?
It's actually.
It's in there already?
To what's in your.
I think they've been worked out, right, Tony?
It's all been worked out.
Yes. So everybody's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, number two, a proposed amendment to the land development regulations about arcades. Also, on April 6, the former city planner, Don Sammet, also made a presentation to the city council regarding this. This is the change where the increase, the number of coin-operated amusements, such as pinball machines, video games, and skee-ball, to be allowed on premises. But we have to establish factors that they're gonna be a secondary use for the premises. They cannot be a primary use.
So the only thing I'll say when I read this was, we talked about not having them in front of.
Right, I didn't see that.
The store, and that wasn't in it. So can we just make sure that there's a limitation on, you know, skee-ball literally in front of your store on the sidewalk? I don't mind if you put it to the side, just not in the front, not by the front door.
Not just skee-ball, any arcade.
Any.
Right, that was, that was what we talked about, that nothing in the front, or in any public space. I didn't see that explicitly in there.
Yeah, I didn't either. And then the only other thing is, we talked about, I think we kind of went back and forth whether or not we were gonna require a cover. And I thought the consensus was we weren't, but I'm not sure exactly what the consensus was.
Not a cover, an enclosure.
An enclosure, that's still in it. It looked like it was, that's still in it.
That was my question. But what I asked, going back to April 6, is like, I asked Don Sammet, I reviewed emails, how do we, as a council, overturn the planning board's recommendation? And it was, he said, it's very simple. You wait to the planning board to adopt it, and you overturn it. So that's the language I'm looking for, that we disagree with this enclosure part. I agree, nothing in front. Do you want to know something? I totally disagree with the planning board, 25% should be arcades. But that's what the planning board, because if I own a restaurant, I can make 25% of my restaurant an arcade. It's an arcade. So I think the 25% should be moderated down, but I'll let that go. But I mean, to have somebody that has an outside side garden, to have a basketball hoop to shoot outside and say, well, you can't have it unless you enclose it. Well, you just built, you know, Madison Square Garden. So is it outside or is it inside? And Don Sammet, very, his recommendation was basically to override it, because there's already ways there to make sure this does not happen, be it noise ordinances. So he thought it was like overkill by the planning board. For these reasons, in my opinion, the proposed amendment is consistent with the city master plan. I recommend the following ordinance amendment be forwarded to the planning board for review, blah, blah, blah. And the noise ordinance already covers this. So, and whether it passes or fails, let's just vote on it and get it over with.
But I want to know, how do you enforce the 25%, especially now that there are arcade games that our countertops can sit on a table, can sit on a bar?
Well, I can only tell you how I think they do it downtown. It's my understanding, and I'm sorry, Don's not here. But it's, you know, inevitably, what happens downtown is, to ensure that there's retail, they have a certain part of their store that is selling, shelter home is an example, furniture, knickknacks, things like that. If the percentage of your store, so, you know what, I'm gonna dig myself in a hole, because I'm gonna use a couple of different examples where it doesn't exactly work downtown, and I don't, I'm not, I don't want to get anyone in trouble downtown. But, so for example, if you had a.
Let's do restaurant and bar. You'd have a restaurant and bar, and you're gonna dedicate 25% of that to.
I think they like measure it out.
They measure it out.
Yeah.
But then what happens with the bar area? If you want to put machines on, sitting on the bar, sitting at tables, how?
Do you measure that out? I don't know. No, that's a good question. I don't know how they do that. I know downtown, they measure out the space for retail to ensure that even if you're, let's say you're selling art supplies and you have a gallery, you know, that your art supply selling is some section. I mean, you could just have a ga, we actually allow galleries downtown, so I'm using that for example. But it would, I think they measure the space. I think you're asking a good question. I don't know how they measure out, like, a mega touch, right, on a bar.
The way I read Don's memo was that he was recommending that you consider the planning board's proposal in this regard, because he felt that it would provide the zoning officer with more objective criteria, as opposed to a subjective determination on her part to determine whether the arcade use was a principal use or an accessory use, without having kind of like a bright line test. This establishes a definitive, you know, it has to be less than 25%. But then.
So would that be, when you say 25%, is that square feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm guessing, yes.
He felt that it would, it would take the subjectivity away from the equation.
Which is a good thing.
The zoning officer being put in a predicament of, well, is this accessory use, or is this the principal use? Where do I draw the line? Now there is a, you know, a bright line test.
So to Yvonne's point, then, do you count the hypothetic, we all know what a mega touch is, right, that was big on the bars in the, in the 90s and 2000s? Well, I spend a lot of time in bars. Do you, do you, is that count as part of the space, the mega touch?
Tony, I think this is something that's already being used with other types of accessory uses in the city, and that there is a process for them to make that determination. But I think that, you know, the planning board recommended it, Don felt it was a valid point, and brought it forward for your consideration to include it. We can certainly check as to how this is implemented.
Again, I'm sorry I raised the 25%. I have no problem with the 25%. But I mean, I know other people said, like, why would I go into a restaurant that has all these arcades and everything? So, I mean, I have no problem. But the problem I have is us telling people that have arcade machines or arcade games outside, saying, now you gotta build a structure around them, now they're inside machines. And again, Don says, his second bullet point is. second bullet point is, these noise concerns can be addressed through other police powers, be it the nuisance code. And talking to him, he said, John, I totally agree with you. Like, that should be overruled.
And council has the discretion. Once you refer someone in a planning board, you can accept their recommendations, you can accept them in part and reject them in part.
And when we reject them, we have to, and when we reject them, we have to say why. Said why would be, because our planning officer said, he disagrees with it, and says there's also other ways to enforce this.
Correct. And the process to do this is, you give us direction on what to include and what not to include in the final version of this ordinance, and then we have a resolution for your consideration at the time of second reading, as to what the reasons for why with this ordinance that you're adopting, you're deviating in certain respects from the planning board's recommendations.
Okay, so I, so do the resolution, then.
So I just want to make sure that there's a consensus, though. And I'm looking at what's here in Don's language, and it says, the board recommends that a maximum of 25% of the usable interior floor area, that that be the limit for these arcade games, for it to be considered to be an accessory use. It couldn't cover more than 25% of the usable floor area. How Barbara determines that.
Of the usable floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure she must have that as a benchmark with regard to other types of accessory uses. We can certainly check on that.
I see opportunity for abuse.
I'll defer to what you all want to do with the space.
I want to get it over with. I don't care if I win, lose, draw, but I mean, we're going to talk about this, and then if somebody's like, already busting the 25%, well, they're going to continue to bust it for like, another six months until we draw this to a conclusion.
Is there another one to do?
I don't know.
I mean, right now, all we have before us is.
Just take out the floor. Take out the floor, 25 square foot.
I don't even see where it says floor.
25% of the usable interior floor area.
Floor area. So, well, I'm going to tell you right now, you could, there's machines that are all over bars that are not on the floor, technically.
And that's my point.
Yeah, yeah.
We're saying 25%.
Yeah. As the person here who probably goes to the bar the most, they're all over the bars. They're not on the floor.
I would.
So if we took out floor, and just said 25% space, and then you calculated the three feet on the bar that these machines are at, or on the tables that these machines are at, add that into the 25, so it's a 25 total. Does that make sense?
But the 25% has to be measured in some way. So if you have the gross square footage of the interior floor area, and then you come up with your calculation as to how, how much measurement-wise these machines take up, and you compare the one versus the other, that's where you can come up with your differential, with the 25%.
It's your only way to do it. That would be your only way to do it.
Yeah.
To ensure that this is in fact an accessory use, and that it doesn't creep over to be primary.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
My preference, I'd rather see is, just if somebody wants it, they'll come in and we do an amendment. But that's, that's just me.
Unless you just want to leave it as the subjective, which was in the original version of the ordinance, that it cannot be a principal use, it's got to be deemed an accessory use. And then a determination would be made by the zoning officer and ordinance with this municipal land use law, as to whether she feels it's a principal use or an accessory use. And we can leave it at that.
Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to keep it subjective, that wouldn't be my cup of tea. What did you say, Yvonne? How did you want to do it?
Well, when we discussed it originally, one of the suggestions that was made from the floor was that we use an amendment for those individuals who want to put in arcade games, and we give them an exception to.
So we would make every person who wanted to put arcade games in go through the amendment process? See, I don't love that, because that's like a six-month process.
Anybody who wants more than three. Because now it says, no more than three are permitted.
No more than three.
Right, that's what we're working with from right now. So essentially, the discussion is, right now, it says no more than three. Do we want to just open it up for more? Or do we want?
I don't object to opening up for more.
Tony, what do you think?
It's just.
Should we knock it down?
With some experience, I've seen how certain individuals abuse laws, and if we say 25%, it'll be 25% of the floor, 25% of the bar, 25% of the tables.
So you want to knock it to 50? What if we knocked it to 15%?
I think 25% is, I think 25% is fair, if you're going to use the, if you're going to use the floor space. But the idea would have to be then, is that, you know, the zoning officer, whoever's going to enforce this, would have to go in, they would have to measure not only floor space, but the space that that machine is taking up on a bar, all right, or on a table or other. And that would have to be calculated into the floor space as well.
So that's what I would like to do. I don't know how to do that.
Change it to a total of 25%?
Total for 25.
That the zoning officer decide what the total is.
No, I don't think you want to leave subjectivity in there like that.
25% of surface, surfaces. Floor, bar, table. You've got to calculate every table.
The whole bar is a.
25% of this whole space.
The bars will make differently, though.
25% of this whole space.
Yeah, if we do square feet.
If it's on the border, she's got to do a lot of calculations. If it's not near it, then it's not a question.
If it's just square feet, that doesn't necessarily mean floor, right?
Correct. Yes, it doesn't matter where the machine is located. Whether it's on a table or a bar, it's, I mean.
It's square feet, okay. So it's 25% square feet, which means you're calculating all the, all the games on the bars and the tables?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not.
Unless I'm missing, I didn't realize you were calculating that.
So that's just the benchmark, that this supremacy measures whatever it is.
Okay.
And the number of machines can't exceed 25% of that. And the measurement, I presume, taken of the size of the machines that are on the bar, tables, and elsewhere, they don't have to sit on the floor themselves. And then you compare the calculation versus the 25% of the floor, and see if they're.
Let's not get 20%.
You can make it less if you.
20%.
I say 20%, and I would like also in there, I think we want, make sure no in the front, or public space.
And.
Enclosures, don't worry about them.
And remove enclosures.
So establishments can have them in the outside area without the enclosure, the permanent structure, the language he originally proposed to this meeting.
Whoa, wait, wait, is that it?
Maybe hand in 25%.
25%. They said 20.
20.
20.
Are we going to 20?
Yeah. We're all okay, I'm going to 20.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll compare that ordinance along with a proposed resolution of reasons for why you're deviating from the planning board.
Okay.
Okay, number three, under items for discussion, parking advisory committee recommendations.
Yeah.
Okay, so parking. So the parking committee has been working to come up with recommendations that are based on the report from Desmond, are based on feedback from residents, from businesses, from developers, from the community. So these are intended, these recommendations are to the council, intended to relieve a bit of the crush that may be coming for the summer. These are not long-term recommendations, these are to go into effect June 1, and carry through the year. If some of them work out, we may think about using them in the following year. So the idea was that, the focus has been District 4, which is the central business district of Cookman Banks Madison, and that's where the problems are mainly at this point. So the first point is to open up more spaces. And the ice car lots have already been discussed, so that's old news. But the idea of the municipal lot, and then in addition, in talking with the mayor and Officer Della, the lot south of the transportation center as well could be opened up, lined and numbered, so that we could open those up to both residents, employees, and public parking. That's one recommendation. Another recommendation is that the area, Press Plaza, will be open only to public parking, and we will transfer that parking, the residential parking, to the area between Lake Ave, one block east. So Lake Ave only goes to, is it Press Plaza only? This would extend an extra block. And then that area would also, which is, this is new, because it was missed in the meeting, but that would also be a District 2 permit parking as well. So that section there between Press Plaza and Hack would be District 4 and District 2, there would be overlap. So that's another recommendation. Employee permits in District 4 will be, continue to be issued to a maximum number of 300. The.
After 300, you go on a waiting list?
You go on a waiting list. Guest permits in all zones will no longer be issued after June 1. And the trickiest one is the Bangs Ave Garage. So the tricky part, now let, maybe Amy talk about this a bit, but the tricky part of this is you've got three governmental bodies trying to coordinate, so that's part of the issue. What we would like to do is we have, with the state's blessing and with an operational plan, we would like to open up 75 of those spots on a first-come, first-served basis for residential permits. So what that would be is, anyone, what the difference between, this would be a new type of permitting, right, this would be, you get a spot in the Bangs Ave Garage, it's your spot, it has a number on it, it's your number, that's your spot. And you would, we would be charging the same, with the state's blessing, the same rate as a Meridian now?
Right.
Which is $40 per month for that spot. So that would take 75 people, hopefully, off the, off of the areas now that are for residential. We'd also open up these two lots, that would move a lot of people there, open up some more, open up some more spots. The other piece with the Bangs Ave Garage is, we would allow the people who bought permits for that, those spots, to be renewing in 2016. So it would give you like, your foot in the door. We don't know exactly if the price would be the same, but we would allow you to renew at whatever prices it turns.